Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. I'm Heather Peffley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's June 16th, 2020 regular meeting, being conducted remotely where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council Chambers, will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV Cable Channels 189 and 190 and available at manistetv.org. There will be no video associated with this meeting. The microphones of all members of the City Council, the City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk will always be live unless there is an audio disruption. I will now begin to unmute and check each microphone that will be live during the meeting. Councilmember Cooper, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Heather. Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor Zelinski. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Heather.
Councilmember Sipsec, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Councilmember Shemansky, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Heather. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Grabowski, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
City Manager Fad Taylor, can you hear me?
I can.
City Attorney, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Heather.
Thank you. As a reminder, councilmembers, please clearly state your name before speaking and mute your device whenever you are not speaking. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. Please call the roll. I'll call the meeting to order and then call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zelinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Assessor.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Finance Director. Finance Director, sorry.
Here.
Detective Sergeant Glass.
I'm here, Heather.
Let's see what I'm missing. I thought I had Deputy Fire Chief, but it looks like he may have dropped off. So I think we're all set.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have a request to amend the agenda. If council approves this amendment, we won't be putting it under the Consent Agenda. We'll be putting it under New Business. It'll be Item I, the action item I. The request, the motion is to, or the request to amend the agenda is as follows. "Consideration of a Century 21 Boardwalk Hosted Fundraiser for the Volk Theater." Is there a motion to amend the agenda to include that item?
Cooper, motion.
Shemansky, second.
I have a motion and a second. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Mayor Zelinski. Mayor Zelinski, this is Beaton.
Yes.
On the Consent Agenda, there are two items. Consideration of the 2020 Catamaran Racing Association Manistee Regatta and the consideration of the Manistee JC's Live Music Event at First Street Beach. I would like to take those off the Consent Agenda so that we could discuss them.
Okay, that's the Regatta.
Right.
And the JC's event.
Right. They have common things along with the Century 21 Agenda item that we're adding. So that's why I'm asking them to be removed and so that we can discuss them and vote on them independently.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, citizens' comments on agenda-related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It is very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise whatsoever in the background. Otherwise, there will be disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we will move on to the next person to line. We will now take public comments. Agenda items for those who do not have an agenda are: the Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes. Payroll Invoices. Notification Regarding Next Work Session. Consideration of Approval of Invoices and Draw Request Number Four for USDA Rural Development Wastewater Improvement Phase One. Other Agenda Items. Other Agenda Items. Consideration of a Resolution to Have an Alternative Day for the July and December Board of Review. Consideration of a Resolution to Apply for the Michigan Department of Transportation Grant. Consideration for Authorizing the City Manager to Approve and Submit USDA Rural Development Draw Request and Invoices. Consideration of a Fee Schedule for Ordinance 19-24, Chapter 1064, Charges for Fire Runs and Emergency Services. Consideration of Budget Amendment 2020-4 for Physical Year and June 30th, 2020. Consideration of Approving a Price Increase in the Equipment Portion of a Previously Approved Prowl Truck Purchase. And Enter Into a Four-Year Installment Purchase Contract with Shelby State Bank, Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boyne Falls Incorporated, and DNK Truck Company to Finance the Previously Approved Purchase of a Single-Axle Prowl Truck and Related Equipment. Also, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing 2020 Capital Improvement and Refunding Bond. Consideration of Support for Staff to Move Forward with Research and Development for a Short-Term Rental Ordinance for the City of Manistee. And Consideration of a Century 21 Hosted Fundraiser for the Volk Theater. The City Clerk will now take over and take comments.
Telephone number ending in 5127. Do you have a comment or would you like to pass?
Pass.
Telephone number ending in 1981. Do you have a comment or would you like to pass?
Pass.
Telephone number 6739. Do you have a comment or would you like to pass?
Pass.
Telephone number ending in 8449. Do you have a comment?
Pass, please.
Number 9821. Do you have a comment?
I wish to pass at this time.
Number 9561. Do you have a comment?
Pass.
Mayor Zelinski, those are all of the people waiting in the waiting room.
Thank you, Heather. Consent Agenda. All items marked with a note sticker are on the Consent Agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the Consent Agenda, any member of council may have an item from the Consent Agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent Agenda Items Include: Approval of Minutes. Payroll Invoices. Notification Regarding Next Work Session. Consideration of Approval of Invoices and Draw Request Number Four for USDA Rural Development Wastewater Improvement Phase One. At this time, council could take action to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Grabowski, I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Hearing None, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We'll now take up consideration of the Catamaran Race Consideration of the 2020 Catamaran Racing Association Manistee Regatta. The Catamaran Racing Association of Michigan is requesting the use of Douglas Park for the Manistee Regatta event. This event will take place Friday, August 7th, 2020, from 12:00 p.m. to Sunday, August 9th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. And will include launching 20 to 30 catamarans from Douglas Park and sailing on Lake Michigan. At this time, council could take action to approve the request for the Catamaran Racing Association of Manistee Regatta on August 7th, 8th, and 9th, 2020, subject to appropriate department approvals. Is there a motion?
Grabowski, I'll make the motion.
I'll second, Jermaine.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Yes, I do. And this actually is my concern and it actually would touch on not just the Catamaran Racing Association, but the JC's and the event that Century 21 is going to hold on Fifth Avenue Beach. This is my comment. All of these are contingent on department head approval. So we have changed a couple of, we have changed some ordinances within the city specifically pertaining. The biggest one I can think of is the marijuana one. You cannot smoke marijuana in public. So we have people coming in from out of town. We have people coming in to do music. We have people coming to sit on the beach and have a good time. I just think it's important and I think the police and I think it's appropriate that the departments do speak to the organizers of these events to make them aware, keep communication open so that they know what the changes are. And I think Detective Glass is in the audience, so I'm sort of relying on him to maybe add some more to this.
Detective Glass, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My plan was absolutely start at least a dialogue with each organization and kind of outline expectations and ordinance pertaining to it. Specifically, you know, bottles on the beach, marijuana, alcohol, things like that, just to make sure that we're, everyone's on the same page during these events.
That would be great. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Are there any discussions referencing keeping the social distances and add to the vibe of music events?
If I may.
Sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Josh Glass here. That would be include the same conversation to make sure they do their best to maintain the social distancing at these events.
Okay, Josh, are you going to have anybody go down there to check on them or is it just going on their honesty?
We're not going to have anybody assigned to those events specifically, but it'll be added to the patrol. So we'll send out notification to our on-duty staff to make sure that we are monitoring and patrolling those events the best we can.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the Regatta?
Yes, this is Mick Shemansky. I think there's also, again, some restrictions that have been passed down from the state and the governor. And I'm concerned that we are not in good faith complying with some of the state requirements. For example, I understand that gatherings over 250 people at this point are not permitted. That's one. Also, there's a, I believe there is a separate rules that are put in place for camping, which is part of the, the only real objection I have to the Regatta is that it really does not state anywhere that they will be in full compliance with all the state requirements for social distancing and camping and some of the other requirements that have been established. Like I said, as much as I like the entertainment events, I'm just not sure how we, in good faith, can allow one group to have a group of 250 people and then perhaps another one coming down the pipe. We say, well, no, we don't want that crowd. We don't know how you're going to handle or manage that. I think it's just going to be difficult. And I'm just not sure on how we go about controlling large crowds. We're talking about the 3rd of July. My guess is there's going to be well over 250 people on that beach. And if you put end stand and entertainment, I just have a sneaking suspicion that people are going to gather around that music venue. So those are my comments.
Mayor, this is Thad. Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir. I was just going to call on you.
Yeah. What I've been telling event organizers that I spoke with is that certainly they can use city property for their events, but they have to comply with the current restrictions and any executive orders issued by the governor. So right now, for outdoor events, you can have up to 250 people. And if they're not of the same household, they have to maintain six-foot social distancing. So the onus is going to be on the event organizer to make sure that they comply with those restrictions. Now, obviously, if it got way out of hand, you know, our police department can come down and take some action. But it's, the onus is going to be on that event organizer. Specifically with the cram, they're not going to approach anything close to 250. They've been here several years and it's a smaller group. You know, they're spaced out. They're on their catamarans. And the big thing is just the observers. They just have to, you know, use common sense and maintain social distancing. So I don't have a real concern with the cram event.
Any other comments, concerns? Hearing None, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec. Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Manistee JC Live Music Event. The Manistee JC's will hold a live music event at First Street Beach on Friday, July 3rd, 2020, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Location of the event would be the First Street Beach south of the Concession Pavilion. COVID-19 precautions will be practiced by the Manistee JC's to the best of their ability. At this time, council could take action to approve the request to use city services, parks, and streets for the Manistee JC to hold the live music event on Friday, July 2nd, 2020. The First Street Beach, subject to appropriate department approval. Is there a motion?
Cooper, motion approved.
Grabowski, second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Again, I think we answered my question regarding the social distancing from Sergeant Glass.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your comment.
Grabowski here. I think they answered my question for social distancing from Sergeant Glass.
Anybody else?
This is Mick Shemansky. I would just ask that the JC put a little bit more detail into exactly how, to the best of their ability, they're going to comply with social distancing.
Mayor, this is Thad again. Mayor, this is Thad. Yeah, I would just suggest that Detective Sergeant Glass get hold of the representative from the JC's and ask them to submit a plan that they intend to follow that will comport with the executive order of social distancing and 250. And then allow Detective Sergeant Glass to approve their plan.
Any other comments? Hearing None, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfending business, we have none. New business. Consideration of Resolution to Have an Alternative Day for July and December Board of Review. This Resolution will allow the city to hold July and December Board of Review on Wednesday. At this time, council will take action to grant the July and December Board of Review to meet on Wednesday for 2020. Is there a motion?
This is Beaton. I'll make the motion.
Grabowski, I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing None, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a Resolution to Apply for a Michigan Department of Transportation M.D. grant. The City Utility Capital Improvement Plans and Transportation Improvement Plan includes upgrading Jackson Street, Van Buren Street, and a portion of 8th Street. To assist with financing those projects, the city plans to apply for a M.D. Category B grant for $250,000. At this time, council could take action to approve the attached resolution to establish a request for funds provided the required grant and required grant match and provide the required grant match. Designate Jeffrey W. Mapula as a designated agent and agree to future maintenance on the project. Is there a motion?
This is Shemansky. Motion.
I have Shemansky made the motion. Is there a second?
This is Beaton. I'll make the second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, what, Mayor, what part of 8th Street are they doing?
Mr. McCool, would you want to answer that?
Yeah, this is Jeff McCool. The section of 8th Street would be from US 31 to Hopkins. So basically, from the highway to the top of the hill where we are currently reconstructing that hill with concrete.
Okay, I know where you're at. Thanks a lot, Jeff.
Yep.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing None, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Authorizing the City Manager to Approve and Submit USDA Rural Development Draw Request and Invoices. USDA Rural Development requires that invoices of construction projects they fund be approved and submitted as a draw request on forms they provide. City Council can approve the invoices and draw requests or they can delegate that to the City Manager, who is the city authorized representative. Delegating to the City Manager will ensure that the city can meet the contractual requirements for payment to the contractors. Excuse me. At this time, council could take action to authorize the City Manager to approve and submit USDA Rural Development Draw Request and Invoices. Is there a motion?
Cooper, motion.
Shemansky, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have one comment to make. When these draws come, they're obviously going to come. I'm anticipating at a time when, you know, it's before we can see them on the check run, I suppose. So I'm just, if we can ask Mr. Taylor if he could just let us know when they're happening and just let us know.
I just have one question, Mr. Taylor. I noted in, I noted with the attachments, you indicated that the council would be notified when these payments are made. Are they going to be notified on a regular expenditure sheets that we receive in our attachments or are they going to be something different?
They're going to be included as part of the monthly invoices, the same you get with the council packet. If you want something above and beyond that, as Councilmember Beaton suggested, we can let council know when they've been authorized.
I think that would be a balance. I would like to see that happen. So it's just, I just think it's a good step to have.
I would like to see it, just to separate it so that it's easy to pick out. Sometimes it's hard to pick things out of that, out of that budget.
I'm sure we, I'm sure we can do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Mayor Zelinski, this is Finance Director Bradford. The invoices themselves are all coded to one account number. So we can provide that account number to the council. So when they look at those monthly invoices report, they'll know where to see them.
Okay, just something that makes it easy for people to say, to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? Hearing None, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a Fee Schedule for Ordinance 19-24, Chapter 1064, Charges for Fire Runs and Emergency Services. City Council approved Ordinance 19-24 Cost Recovery on January 7th, 2020. City council approved ordinance 19-24 cost recovery on January 7th, 2020. This ordinance authorized the recovery of certain costs for fire runs and emergency services and authorized by Michigan, as authorized by Michigan Complied Law 41.806A. To date, there is no fee schedule which has been adopted by city council. At this time, council could take action to approve the proposed fee schedule for cost recovery ordinance 19-24. Is there a motion?
Grubowski, I'll make a motion.
I'll second, Jermaine.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I think we, are these fire runs and emergency services, these aren't for the citizens of Manistee, right?
Mr. Taylor?
No, these, the intent of these are, for example, if there's a transformer that's blown or a wire down, another example would be the semi that went off the road and into a residential area where our department is tied up, just standing by, waiting for appropriate responders, whether it's Consumers Power, or the gas company, or something like that. These would be abnormal things. It's not intended to charge for, you know, vehicle accidents that occur between residents and things of that nature. It's just where we're tied up, waiting for somebody else to come and take care of a problem.
This does not change the way our, if we, if we have a house fire, we're not charging those people, right?
No, no.
In the city?
No.
Okay. I had a few questions on that, that's why I asked.
Sure.
Any, any other comments?
Okay, so this, is, is it, this fee schedule applies to any of the residents who actually live in the city of Manistee? Are there exceptions?
It's not the intent of this. It's for those unusual circumstances where we're called out just to provide, for lack of better terms, scene safety while we're waiting for other responders to come and take care of their problem. Consumers Power, it could be the gas company, those kind of things.
Okay.
This is-
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Nick Shemansky, am I correct? We actually have an ordinance that addresses when you would charge. From what I understand is, the ordinance did not have a specific fee of how much we would charge. Is that correct?
Correct.
Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grubowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of budget amendment 2020-4 for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. The city of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendment addresses expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with state statutes regarding appropriations. Mr. Bradford, you kind of want to, for the record, go over those for us?
Certainly, Mayor. The First Amendment has to do with the fire department, and there's a total of $20,000 of increased costs. The first of those is a $9,000 budget amendment to overtime. In discussion with Acting Chief Cameron, that relates to higher than normal volume of callbacks, particularly in, I believe he said, December and January. And then the second item has to do with vacation holiday and sick sellback, amount of $11,000, and part of that had to do with the last fire contract, the way we changed the holiday benefit language. It allowed for a different way of administering that, and it resulted in a little bit more sellback, but it should be a one-time impact. And those amendments should be absorbed by fund balance and/or offset by some of the work share savings. Second, second thing to look at would be for the, in the general fund, transfers out of about $17,000, and this just reflects the transfer of proceeds from the sale of city-owned property to the local street fund, so that's offset by revenue. Next item is the Pining and Zoning Department, and there's about $1,100 worth of increases. Part of that was for software, and part of it was for printing and publishing, where we had a little bit more activity than we had anticipated. And then the last one is for the building inspection, and at the time that the 2020 budget was prepared, we hadn't transitioned over to contracting out the building inspection. We were still with the state, so there was no budget adopted. This budget amendment reflects our best estimate of where we're going to be as of the end of June. These are more than 100% offset by the revenue received from the city, but again, we only have the budget for the expenditures. So, those are the items that are on the budget amendment number four.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. At this time, council could take action to adopt budget amendment 2020-4 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Cooper.
Is there a second?
Second, Grubowski.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grubowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a price increase in the equipment portion of a previously approved plow truck purchase and entering into a four-year installment purchase contract with Shelby State Bank Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boeing Falls Incorporated and D&amp;K Truck Company to finance the previously approved purchase of a single-axle plow truck and related equipment. On May 21st, 2019, council approved the purchase of a plow truck and related equipment in the amount of $174,627. When approved, it was anticipated that financial arrangements would have to be made at a later date due to the long lead time. Subsequent to council approval, the state bid pricing on the equipment portion increased from $67,425 to $74,065. The truck chassis is done and has been delivered to the equipment vendor for assembly. The city solicited financial bids for the chassis and equipment and needs to close on the financing to pay the vendor. At this time, council could take action to approve the additional equipment cost in the amount of $6,640, and adopt a resolution to enter into a four-year installment purchase contract with Shelby State Bank Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boeing Falls Incorporated and D&amp;K Truck Company in the amount of $145,000 to finance the purchase of a plow truck and related equipment and further authorize the chief financial officer to execute any needed documents. Is there a motion?
Motion, Cooper.
Is there a second?
Second, Shemansky.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments?
This is Beaton. I have a couple of questions. I'm a little bit confused about this. So, the cost for, the part of the truck went from $67,425 to $74,065. We approved the $67,425 during the, when we made that approval portion of it, is, did the state increase after we made the approval, or before?
This is Public Works Director McCullough. What happened is, if you recall, we ordered this truck ahead of the, the approved budget because of the long lead time and because we had a truck that was, had to be taken out of service. The, at the time, they, the Truck and Trailer Specialties was near the end of their contract for MyDeal with the state of Michigan, so they, and I was a little bit confused by this, honestly. They were, they gave us a estimate of the 64,000, or 67,000, and then, once we got council approval and circled back knowing that the chassis was near construction, we went back to them to schedule the equipment to be installed, and we were informed that the MyDeal contract had changed the amount, and they said it was specifically on the, what changed it was the stainless steel that was required on the gas tanks that hadn't been required before. So, when we went to council and council approved, we had the best estimates that we had, and then it got updated and changed and solidified with the 2020 contract with MyDeal.
Okay, so was the $74,065, was that still under the other bids that we got?
Well, we didn't bid it out because we went to the MyDeal contract.
Okay, so we just went to them.
Renegotiated.
Yes, so the state of Michigan actually bids those out and awards those contracts, so we've been using that for the last several years as opposed to bidding them out independently.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get, figure out is whether we could have prevented this from happening by saying, hey, we have a locked-in deal with you at $67,425, but unbeknownst to us, they had raised the prices. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was raise the prices, but we also, they also improved the specs and the longevity of the equipment that we're receiving, and that was handled through the state of Michigan. So, while the price went up, so did portions of the quality.
Okay.
And that's really out of our hands.
Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grubowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution authorizing 2020 capital improvement and refunding bonds. The city has a number of time-sensitive capital projects that need to be, that need, needs to be funded over the next three years. These projects were identified in the, in the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. Administration and the city advisor recommend issuing general obligation limited tax capital improvement bonds to finance these projects, and to the city, and the city to adopt a notice of intent resolution at the May 6th, 2020 meeting, declaring the city intends to issue bonds in the amount not to exceed $6 million. The city also has an opportunity of refinancing its 2010 capital improvement bond at a significant savings. The next step in the process is approving the bonds authorizing resolution, approving the bond authorizing resolution. At this time, council could take action to approve the, a resolution authorizing the issuance of 2020 capital improvement and refunding bonds.
This is Beaton. I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Motion by Beaton, second by Shemansky. Is there any discussion?
This is Shemansky. Just for the record, could you kind of address what the key elements are that we're trying to fund with this bond?
Sure, Councilmember Shemansky, I can do that. There's quite a list of projects that we're going to be funding with the new money bond proceeds. The primary part of that is the shoreline erosion and Riverwalk repairs along the South River Channel. That's about $1.6 million in total. There's also funding for the North Riverwalk and Memorial Park upgrade, and we're hoping to match that with a grant. There are some building items, including some structural work at the historic fire station and a new roof there, as well as a parking, fixing the parking lot. And at the Waterworks Building, we'd be getting a new roof, and we would be addressing an area of the city hall roof that is having some issues since it was renovated. There's a large portion of this that goes to the water utility, and these are to replace water mains primarily that are associated with some street projects that are coming up. That would be Jackson and Van Buren, Quincy and Cleveland, potentially Washington Street, and also, it would be addressing the water main with the M. 55 bridge replacement. Then there's a few smaller projects that have to do with the water towers and some painting there, as well as new roofs for the wellhouses. A portion of this also goes to the sewer utility. The M. 55 bridge reconstruction requires us to put a new forest main in, relocate that, so that's part of it, and also sewer main on Quincy and Cleveland. Then we have a little bit for the marina, which is hopefully going to be matched by a grant for dock upgrades and replacements, although we have been informed by the state that they're kind of putting a hold on those types of grants, at least temporarily, and are only funding emergencies, but we haven't gotten formal notice of that yet. So, overall, the source of funds estimated to repay this bond is going to be general funded about 47%, water funded about 37%, sewer funded about 7%, and capital improvement funded about 8%.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grubowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of support for staff to move forward with research and development of a short-term rental ordinance for the city of Manistee. Following discussions at the June 9th, 2020 work session, the council asked that the planning commission work on an ordinance that would address short-term rentals. At this time, council could take action to support the city planning commission and county planning commission department staff to research, develop, and recommend a short-term rental ordinance. Is there a motion?
Shemansky, I'll make the motion.
Cooper, yes, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You're probably not, I feel obligated to make this comment. When you talk about short-term rentals, that can mean a couple different things. A lot of people around here think of the short-term rentals as vacation rentals in the warm part of the year, and then, there's also short-term rentals that people need that are less than 12 months. So, I do think development of the ordinance should take that into consideration, because it's not really, there's no necessity to have a lease for anything less than 12 months, although, as my experience has told me, that it's always better for both parties if a lease is in place. So, there's a lot of people that are, maybe in apartments that are going month to month, but legally, they have to be given 30 days to vacate if the- but legally they have to be given thirty days to vacate if the landlord wants to rent it out to somebody else. But what really protects people is having a lease. So I don't know how you incorporate that into the ordinance, but it's an important point that people need to know about, so, and if it warrants further discussion, we can always add it to our session.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, this is Martin Poniac. I'm a little confused. Are we still talking about the Airbnb's too? Or is that totally separate issue within the short term as well?
It would be, that is part of the short-term rental, Airbnb's.
So that's going to be part of the whole ordinance as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
Anybody else?
This is Jermaine. Um, I just want to say it one more time. Um, I know that we, we should have some type of reasonable, uh, ordinances for the short-term rentals, but I still think that if you're going to work on the short-term rentals, you need to step up your game for the long-term rentals because the landlords that are housing our residents of Manistee need to be held to a higher standard. Like, the city is seriously slacking on what they allow landlords to get away with and the landlords that have long-term rentals are no different from the landlords that have the short-term rentals. So if you're going to do one, you have to do the other because it's going to look bad if you're just focusing on the high-end vacation rentals or the Airbnb's and ignoring all of the people that live in deplorable houses that are actually our residents. So I just want to put that out there again.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Grabowski here. Um, I agree with Jermaine on that because they are lacking in all that. There was a good letter to the editor in the paper the other day from one of the landlords that owns a lot of things, and he brought up the subject of short-term, and I think everybody ought to read that article. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of a Century Twenty-One Boardwalk hosted fundraiser for the Vogue Theater. Century Twenty-One Boardwalk has planned a fundraising event at Fifth Avenue Beach on Sunday, June twenty-first, twenty-twenty, from six P M. through eleven P M. to benefit the Vogue Theater. They have arranged for entertainment and refreshments at no cost to the participants. Food can be purchased from concessions. No city services have been requested. They intend to accept donations during the event, which will be donated to the Vogue Theater. Other fundraisers are planned each month during the summer. At this time, council could take action to approve Century Twenty-One Boardwalk special event request to host a fundraiser at Fifth Avenue Beach on Sunday, June twenty-first, twenty-twenty. Do I have a motion?
Uh, can I just ask a quick question? This is Jermaine. Am I allowed to step in on this since I am Century Twenty-One?
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I, I, I see no conflict under our, uh, current, uh, policy from, uh, uh, council person, uh, casting a vote on this issue.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a, a motion?
I'll make, Shemansky.
Shemansky made the motion. Is there a second?
Grabowski, second.
Grabowski, second. Any discussion?
Um, I, I, just, just a, a couple of comments. Um, so this, so this will be a special use permit that Century Twenty-One is going out?
Mr. Taylor?
It's, it's, it's a special event request for them.
Okay. I haven't seen it yet unless I've missed it somehow, so, um...
It was emailed to us this afternoon about four o'clock.
It was in a second package.
Well, uh, if Century Twenty-One is, uh, assuming the liability for it then, I'm assuming for this event.
Mr. Taylor?
Um, I, I would ask, uh, Jeff McCullough to respond to that. He, he's the one been in with, in dialogue with them on this event. The discussion of liability hasn't come up. Um, this was something that, uh, one of their agents, Ginny Pelton, put together and put a flyer out in social media requests to try to get people out, enjoy some music, have some refreshments, and then encourage people to donate, um, that she would then pass on to the Vogue.
This is, uh, this is Mick Shemansky. Yeah, I, I would just recommend that we use the same criteria for the Vogue as we just recommended for the J C's and for the catamaran race. Uh, again, that they have a, a plan in place to make sure that they're in compliance and, and have something, uh, tangible to make sure that, uh, the social distancing and the crowds are reasonable.
Yeah, we can, um, retalk to them.
Any, any other concerns?
No, I think, uh, Councilmember Shemansky stated what I was thinking, so I appreciate that.
Any other concerns or comments? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance, via the phone shall be recognized by the city clerk for comments, limited to five minutes. Letter submitted to council will now be read. Every person in the virtual waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. You're up, Heather.
Number one-nine-eight-one, do you have a comment?
Pass.
Number six-seven-three-nine, do you have a?
No, thank you.
Number eight-four-four-nine, do you have a comment?
Pass.
Number nine-five-six-one, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Number nine-eight-two-one, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I did have a comment about the short-term rental. Uh, I wasn't sure what we were voting on. Um, I thought at one time it was limiting occupants for the duration of the rental, but other than that, I'm not sure what we were voting on. That's all.
Can I, can I get your name and address, please?
Yeah, Mary Haw, H A W, four-two-one Cedar Street, Manistee.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Do you want to just briefly fill her in, uh, that person in on what we were doing?
Basically, it was a request from the, our planning commission as well as the Manistee County Planning Department for formal, uh, action by city council to request that the planning commission work on a short-term rental ordinance, um, for review by the city council. So that was the only action that was taken tonight. There's nothing to discuss other than, uh, council just authorized the planning commission and the planning department to work towards, uh, drafting a short-term rental ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Heather, officers, officials and staff, and if you move on to council members, that would be great.
Okay. City manager?
There's just one thing that I wanted to pass on to council. Um, we're working on having, uh, our next meeting, which would be the first meeting in July, um, and, uh, as an in-person meeting. Right now, we're looking at using our council chambers, um, and if we can't make that work, then we'll go to the Ramsgill Theater. So I think it's time that we can get back together and maintain our social distancing and conduct, uh, business in person. That's the only comment I had.
City attorney?
Uh, nothing, Heather, thank you.
Finance director?
No comments, Heather, thank you.
Uh, Detective Glass?
I have nothing, thank you.
Oh, no comment.
Heather?
Yes?
Heather, this is Thad.
Uh-huh.
If, uh, the sec, Detective Sergeant Glass could just give council, uh, some information on the status of the blight program?
Yeah, certainly, if I will. Um, as council knows, we developed a blight program here, the city police department. And, and basic terms, the city was broken into eight different jurisdictions. A specific officer was assigned to a specific jurisdiction or district. Um, we put together a package for the officers which contained local ordinances, state laws, anything pertaining to blight. We also worked in conjunction with the city attorney's office to develop steps of enforcement, um, for the officers to follow, just to make it as easy as possible for the officers. The last group went through training, if you will, uh, two weeks ago, so we've, uh, been on this blight initiative for approximately two weeks. We currently have, uh, approximately sixty, uh, documented blight investigations, if you will, and I'm, I'm certain that that number will, uh, increase substantially. Um, so that's the status of our, of our blight investigations as it stands.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see.
Uh, just one item for council. As you're aware, uh, the city is participating in the work share program. Um, of the forty employees in the public works, thirty-two of them are participating in that work share or are affected by it, and right now, we've got a, about a twenty-five percent reduction in work hours, so that's the equivalent to eight full-time equivalents. Um, we are doing our best to keep up with our normal duties. Uh, however, we are prioritizing that work and trying to keep, um, trying to keep the, the most important things up, up to speed, and then we'll, uh, do catch up with some of the other things. A couple of the things that we've been slow on are the striping of the parking lot, uh, the stump grinding, uh, sidewalk replacements. Uh, we'll be catching up on those, but I just want to let you know that, that there's a downside to, uh, the work share program from, from a works perspective on how much we can get done, uh, but the guys are working harder than ever and, and we're trying to keep up with everything, so please keep that in mind.
Deputy fire chief Karen?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes, Heather, I, I just want to ask Mr. Taylor if there's anything been done about changing the name of Reed's Park Baseball Diamond to Cliver Field?
Yes, uh, to date, uh, Heather has researched our files, could not come up with a, an air. Uh, we've enlisted the help of Mark Federer at, uh, the museum. His initial, uh, review, he, he didn't come up with anybody, but he's going to dig in a little further. So we're just giving him an opportunity to drill down a little deeper. I, I think it's safe to say we're probably not going to come up with any errors, uh, errors, but we will, um, if we don't, we'll just bring it back to council with a recommendation.
Sounds good, Thad. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton? Councilmember Sipsek?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Shemansky?
Hi, uh, you know, this, when we're talking about the blight committee, uh, or the, the blight, is there still a blight committee? And if so, is Detective Glass the, the new chairman? Um, that's...
Uh, this is Thad. There, there is a, a blight committee, but they've not met, uh, since this pandemic hit. Um, and as acting head of the police department, Detective Sergeant, um, Glass will assume that role when we are able to meet again.
Thank you. This, the second thing is, is just more a suggestion, is that, uh, we, if, if we already know what officers and what the eight jurisdictions are, if we could have something put together for the newspaper to let people know, uh, the officer's name and how best to contact them if they have suggestions or issues, and then again, maybe just to reach out to those, uh, members of the blight committee, because a couple of them basically, you know, just stated that since Chief Coldel left, uh, they don't even know if, if they're still on a committee. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Nothing, thank you, Heather.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Nothing, thank you.
And Mayor Zalinski?
I have nothing further. I thank everybody for their time. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I have a motion to adjourn. You'll adjourn? Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mayor.